I'd like to bring this meeting to the Crewe Town Council order. First item, you would all stand for the invocation. Reverend Scotty Logue will give it.
Tonight, I'm going to open us up with a reading from Hebrews, Chapter 6, verse 10. It says, "For God is not unjust, so as to overlook your work and the love that you have shown for his name in serving the saints, as you still do." Let us pray. Father God, we do thank you for an opportunity to gather in this building today. And we're surrounded by people that are from this community. And we have representatives that are here to serve the people in this community. And so, Lord, we ask tonight that you would impart a spirit of servanthood and that you would help us, as people that belong to this community, to be compassionate, to be kind, and to always look for opportunities to serve those who serve us. And so, Lord, tonight, we ask for your spirit to be with us, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
If you all face the flag, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we usually have delegations from the public. Are there any delegations that have signed up or wish to speak? Yes, sir.
First of all, I'm representing the Crewe-Burkville Chamber and also the Events Committee for the Chicken Festival. I would like to express the town for all their work that they supported us with, town workers, and also for the police department. And we had a very good turnout, and we didn't have any thing that we could be disgraced of. So, I want to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you to the chamber for all your hard work.
Anyone else? Very well. Next order of business is consent calendar. Matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of a member of council and may be voted on separately. The consent calendar consists of minutes from the regular town council meeting held on the 13th of June, minutes of the special town council meeting of 30 June, and the bill sheet, plus additions. And I believe you already have the additions.
I'll make the motion that the consent calendar be approved with the necessary additions required.
Mr. Fisher makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Approved. The next item is the town manager's report.
Okay. A couple items of interest importance that I think we need to talk about. I'm not sure, but I believe the mayor may have want to touch on one of these, but I'm going to go ahead and start the process, if that's okay. We've had another break of our 12-inch main, which is the main line that feeds from our water plant to our tanks. We don't have these very often. This line is well over 100 years old. It's actually in pretty good shape for its age, but as everyone knows, it will not last forever. My concern recently is the location of a break could be a potential catastrophe to the town because there are areas. This line runs up and down beside the railroad, and in many cases, just feet from the main railroad line. What that basically means is when we have a break, I'll give you an example. The break last Friday night, it took town crews approximately 7.5 hours to repair. That's from time of discovery to time to repair. Two and a half out of that hours were downtime. Downtime meaning that the railroad shut them down, said they couldn't work. And I'm not blaming the railroad because they had to do that. Their trains coming through, they shut us down one time for 45 minutes because the train was coming out of Petersburg. We're not allowed to question that. Of course, we did. We said, "Well, if you're in Petersburg, why can't we at least work until they get to Blackstone?" Railroad has their rules, and they shut us down. There are other areas on this line that I wouldn't be scared to say that if it broke in these areas, it would be impossible, literally impossible, to get to fix. Having said all that, I want council to start thinking in terms of a possible new line. We need a new line anyway because of the age. There's also this necessity to move it and get it away from the railroad. This can be a very expensive process, and the last time we looked, it was in the millions to replace the line. I do think that there's possibilities for some types of grants out there that we can get some assistance on this type of thing. But I think it's time we start thinking about that and go in and make plans for that. Like I say, it can't last forever, and if we're going to continue to operate like we are, we're going to have to have that line replaced at some point. Another area of concern, which is kind of along the same lines. We maintain two tanks, as everyone knows. We've got the Pennsylvania Avenue tank, and the railroad, we all tank panels of water supply. The Pennsylvania Avenue tank is starting to show some signs of need of rehabilitation. I noticed some rust on the side of it. Again, nothing lasts forever. Now, 10 years ago, we had that tank inspected. Orster Royer was the engineer at the time, and the inspector inspected it inside and out, and we actually got a pretty good report. The only thing that we had to do at that time was put some footings in. Some of the footings were crumbling, the concrete, so we had to replace those. I have a feeling this time that we may have to have more done. Again, and I'm just bringing this up to start the process. What I plan to do is contact some of these companies that do this work and see if they can come take a look at it and give us some sort of preliminary, a budget figure for what needs to be done. As with most everything we do, the process has to go before consultants and engineers, and we have to bid out an RFP or a recommended proposal on what needs to be done, and then, of course, bid it out at some point. I've got a estimate, if it's just a paint job, on the outside of around $200,000, just to give you some idea of what kind of money we're looking at here. Chances are, they're going to go inside and feel like that needs to be rehabilitated as well. So, I did want to bring those things to council's attention. These are items we obviously cannot do without in order to operate the town, so it's something we need to be thinking about. Just to be on the safe side, I have not, we've not had a whole lot of problems with our water, but they recommend that we do flush our hydrants at least once a year while we're in a period now where we do have sufficient water to do that. In the next couple of weeks, we're going to be doing flushing of hydrants. When we do that now, we let everyone know, we advertise it, we code read everyone to let you know when it's going to take place, and we also do it in the evenings now. We don't do it during the day, so that it has, you know, as little chance of disruption as possible. It normally causes some discolored water, and so, of course, we recommend you don't wash any clothes or anything for at least 24 hours, but we'll let you know about that and let council know. I'll start a new program since it's a new year. I'm going to quote some things from the code book every time, some helpful hints for our citizens. And the two tonight are, I want to remind everyone that debris and limbs that you cut in your yard go in your alley, not on the street. They go in the alley. If you provide it in an alley. If you don't, obviously, you have to put it in the street. Grass clippings that you're filling up in your bags and putting out, they will not be picked up unless you have them bagged and boxed and put beside your garbage camp. So, that's my lesson for the citizens.
Sounds good. Do we need any formal action on the water line and the two tanks for you to go ahead and do the research?
I don't think so. I think at this point, I'm just going to go in and start the process, but I wanted to let everybody know that one was coming. Start thinking about how we're going to finance these things in the process.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, the town manager would yield for questions. Couple of years ago, we asked the engineers to come up with short-term and long-term plan for our water rates and so that we can begin to develop a plan for replacing water lines and water tank issues. Have they gone to that yet?
Yes.
Okay.
We have that available to look at.
Okay, perfect. Great. Thank you.
Which obviously can be part of this discussion.
Yeah, I think it's a long-term issue and several million dollars.
Yeah.
Get a look at all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miskovic. Any other questions for the town manager? Very well. Town attorney?
Yes, thank you. This month, I have been mainly working on follow-up action in response to the public hearing that took place on June the 13th regarding the condemnation of certain dedication parcels of property and then also related to the easements regarding the Lipscomb-Stratton project. So, where we are with that project is that after the last public hearing, we had, well, mostly Logan had taken those, the concerns that were voiced at the public hearing back to the engineer that's assisting us with the project, Dave Warner. And Dave Warner has come up with some different drafts of the easements and dedications to address those problems. And I know that Ms. Morgan and Dave Warner were discussing those issues with them. And then also, I am in the process of getting the offer letters out for the other citizens as well, who, you know, that's the next step in the process, as I explained at the last public hearing. The first step is adopting the resolution. Then you have to get an offer letter out that essentially makes a purchase offer to acquire the fee simple or the easement. And then from there, if there still can't be an agreement reached, then the town goes to the next avenue, which is having to file for certificates of condemnation. So, that's where we are with that. That's what most of my month has been spent on. And then, of course, getting the town prepared for the public hearing that took place within the last month with the different taxes.
Thank you, Mrs. Bacon. Any questions for Mrs. Bacon?
Tessie, there was, I saw in the papers last week, there was a property being sold by Nodaway County.
Yes.
Yes, the property's being taken down in the young, East Carolina.
Yes.
Are we in conjunction with that?
Yes, and I have, and I will follow up again with Jim Elliott about that, but certainly the town of Crewe is a client of Jim Elliott, and he's the attorney who does the tax sales. So, and he knows that there's delinquent taxes, but certainly, I will follow up with him again on that and get him an updated balance this week.
Thank you. Any other questions for the town attorney? Very well. I've just been handed a note. The boys from the Nodaway County Babe Ruth would like to address council. They did not know if they could come forward. We're going to make space for them to come forward so they can chat with us, but not before I put on my Crewe Railroad baseball hat.
Can we just get right to it?
That's fine, there. That'll be fine.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're the Nodaway Babe Ruth 13-15-year-old baseball team, and my name's Elijah Warner.
Brendan Newman.
William Drew.
Demarcus Anderson.
And I'm Cole Williams, and we recently, last week, just went through the District 2 district tournament for the 13-15 All-Stars, and we went undefeated throughout the tournament. And I like to say that we beat Ludenberg twice in a row.
They beat Ludenberg twice in a row. That's what he said.
Let me know, they start from eight to three to second round.
Outstanding. So, you guys are the champs for 13-15-year-olds Babe Ruth?
Yes, sir.
Outstanding.
Congratulations.
And we here to ask for y'all's support.
Well, what do you need? What are you looking for?
We need help in funding our trip.
Donations.
Donations.
To go where?
To Newport News for the state tournament.
I do not think it is normally an action of council, but I'll have to discuss it with my colleagues here.
Yes, sir.
You have historical memory on this.
And like you said, it's up to council what they want to do.
Right, right.
I don't have any problem with it myself, just because it's a decision the council has to do.
I understand, I understand. Do you all want to discuss it now, then, or do you want to wait?
What did we do last year? Can you remember? They didn't make it last year. I'm sorry, for the girls. The girls. We did fundraisers. Police weren't helping do fundraisers.
I believe we did give them some money. I'm not sure how much. I guess my first question would be, is there potential for other teams to make it beyond district between us?
There's always a potential.
Oh, I mean, have the other teams all not made it, like, lost? Have I said lost?
The Major League and minor league are out of it. One of the softball girls leagues are out of it. The other one plays tonight. I don't know if they're going to, now that's state. It's a little bit different when they get money from direct themselves. These boys are not under Crewe-Burkville Youth Recreation Association, under the Babe Ruth Association, well, Nodaway County Recreation Association. I believe it. All right.
When's the trip? When's the game? We leave next Thursday.
This Thursday.
How much have you raised today?
This Thursday?
They just won last night. They just won last night, and they're going to be in Newport News Thursday. This Thursday.
This Thursday. How much have you raised so far?
None. Do y'all have any plans to raise the money between now and then? No, sir, not yet.
Have you contacted the Veterans of Foreign Wars and the American Legion?
No, sir, no.
Okay. You need to contact them as well.
Yes, sir.
Is this for overnight stay or expenses for that type of thing? So, y'all plan on staying?
Yes, sir.
Where might that money, what budget item might that money come out of?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec. Have to be Parks and Rec.
Okay.
How much time have we got to let you know? Thursday?
Thursday. Yes, sir.
Well, we kind of got some connections, so I think we'll get together, maybe think about it, and I can make some phone calls around the council and see what budget and that type of thing.
Who's your manager?
Scotty.
Coach?
Scotty Atkins.
Okay.
Scotty Atkins, Chris Perry, and his father, Orpheus.
Okay, can one of them contact the town manager tomorrow afternoon?
Yes, sir.
All right, and then that'll give him time to make a few phone calls.
Yes, sir.
And give him time to write a check and help you on your way.
Thank you. I would also suggest contacting the Chamber of Commerce. There may be.
Right there, yeah.
There might be some potential with it.
And I'd like a roster, if I get a full roster of the team.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Set up a car wash or something in the next couple of days.
Oh, yeah. We were talking about that on the way up here.
Do you have information where individuals can make just personal donations?
Who would they contact? If somebody, somebody tonight wanted to call up?
Yeah. Was it Warren?
I was trying to let them speak.
They did well.
I think they did well, too, on real count. But they have worked hard, and if you had seen them play, the first game that they played, even though the second was more impressive score-wise, one to zero. I have never been to a professional game. I felt like I would have gone out and given them more money to see that game. These boys played their heart out. It was great to see. And they do have fundraisers lined up. They're doing, what is that thing you daddy cooks?
Oh, yeah, we're cooking either pork loins or balsam butts.
We're doing that, and then there's one other thing, but we just won yesterday, so we're just getting started.
The question was, if somebody wants to send a personal donation, where do we send it?
Who do we call?
Did you say Tom?
Would it be Amy Eddy?
Amy Eddy, that would be good. That would be good. Because we aren't very well represented or included in the CBRA part, but as the Babe Ruth, we're pretty separate in kind of our, so.
Have you got Amy's contact data? All right, then we'll get, we'll get that and we'll put it out there. Is that your boy?
This one's mine. I feel like they're all mine.
I'm getting old.
I really do. Thank y'all for listening.
Just one last question. Do you know your total amount needed?
We don't know our total amount needed, and this is why. We're going to Newport News, but actually, the way it's looking, we have a really good chance to go to Tennessee, and so, that's where the trouble's going to come from, you know, financially, and so, we're just trying to be proactive here.
Well, you should have asked us for money to go to Tennessee. When you're making your car wash, that's what you're raising money for, to go to Tennessee. Newport News is just a stepping stone, right?
Exactly.
All right. Good enough. It's, we're going to get the word, we'll get the word out, and I'm sure donations will be forthcoming.
All right.
Thank you. Congratulations.
One question. Are you going to leave?
Oh, yeah. We have told you that, sir.
Okay, just checking.
Thank you all. The next item of business is normally committee reports. Committee chairs are asked to submit reports in writing prior to council packets going out on Friday before the Monday meetings. Chairs may state nothing to report if no significant actions have occurred during the reporting period. In our case, this is the first meeting that this council has had, and they have received memos with their appointments to various committee meetings, or various committees, rather. We can go around the room. I doubt anyone thinks about he's got anything, but you may have some old business from before that you want to tackle, Mr. Miskovic.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee with, will be meeting at its regular time, the first Wednesday of August for, at noon at Dine and Crewe. That's August 3rd, noon at Dine and Crewe.
That's Economic Development.
Economic Development Committee. In your packets, you have a proposed letter to property owners, owners of derelict and vacant buildings. What we're, what I'd like to discuss is the potential for sending out this letter with the mayor's signature, along with photos of the individual properties who it gets sent to, and asking if the property owners would be willing to do one of three things. Put prospective businesses and, I'm sorry. Put prospective businesses and property owners in contact with one another. Two, stage properties to give a favorable impression to visitors and prospective businesses. And/or three, accepts, allow the town to accept, or to donate their property to the town. Donate or sell at a very low cost. So, essentially, these derelict and vacant properties, especially the derelict properties, if we go the legal route, costs us a lot of legal fees and several years before things are actually done. This is a way to streamline, ultimately streamline by accepting donated properties, in which case, the property owner gets the tax benefit of donating the property. Or at least, at the very minimum, allowing us to go in and basically clean it up a little bit, stage it, so it brings in the curb appeal.
The one thing I would like to add to that, though, is I agree, that's a great idea. The one thing we need to be sure of if we're going to do it is that there's a satisfactory title search on it, so that we aren't just giving, you know, a building that has a substantial lien on it.
What does a title search cost normally?
Well, it, you, well, I can do it, or there's actually other people that do it at a super rate than I do. So, village title services, we usually do them for $75 or $95, depending on, you know, the length of the title search, and that's who we have gotten to do our title searches for the Lipscomb-Stratton project, to confirm the current owners.
What is the feelings of council? Mr. Reed?
So, we'd have to basically do a title search on every property before we send a letter to them?
Negative. We would do a title search before we accepted donated property.
Okay, so we send the letters, we get a response, and then we do a title search?
That's correct.
Mr. Sisk? Nothing? Mr. Fisher? Stinson?
I don't think we have much to lose. This was a suggestion when Councilman Miskovic and I went to Pickett for the FAFCE meetings, and one of the ladies that was one of the experts there suggested this to us as a more expedient way. I think the worst thing that'll happen is we won't get any response at all.
Which we're at 40 cents a stamp.
Mr. Knight? Mr. Abel?
I agree with me.
Okay.
Do we need action at this point, or do we want to put it in committee to refine it, or?
I would accept an action on it, and I would move that we send this letter to vacant and derelict property owners with the mayor's signature.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? There is no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay. The motion carries.
Okay, and then just moving on with the rest of the report, the, there will be a local history event, if anyone's interested. The Blackstone Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring a Nodaway County history forum on Wednesday, the 27th, at 7:00 PM at the Crewe Community Center. Forum consists of three panel members, former Blackstone council member Constance Wynn, Burkhville Mayor Joe Morsett, and Crewe Mayor Greg Heans. Again, that's Wednesday, the 27th. That's 7:00. Hope to see everyone out there.
Where was it?
Crewe Community Center. If council members and the mayor would, like, we need to update the website, specifically the leadership section, with the mayor and new council members, and because we're putting on new photos, I would just as soon take new photos of everyone, so they're all uniform. So, I propose we do that after this meeting, if everyone is okay with that.
I'm fine with it.
And then if the new, if everyone would look at their bio and make sure that everything's up to date, and those of you who haven't looked at their bios, and send something similar. Mr. Foss already touched on the Chicken Festival. Thank you, everyone, for that, and I understand the Boxcar did extremely well that evening as well, and that's tax money. And the grant application for the tourism initiative, the grant application has been submitted, and we're just waiting to hear back.
Thank you for your work on that grant application process. I know it's a lot of work, it's a lot of research, and it takes a lot of, takes, takes a lot of stick to it, so I understand where you're coming from on that. We've also created, now, one of the things I've done, I wanted to consolidate our committees, if you will, and what I've done is trim our committees from seven to five, and I've taken shared duties and reallocated them into other committees that have some overlapping responsibilities. Coupled with that, I have taken some of the people on one committee and basically put them on another committee, and this is to basically ease the scheduling and the time demands on the members of council. So, these committees are a little different than what you had before. Infrastructure Committee, Mr. Sisk? Anything to report? Kiosk, much stuff.
Kiosk, I want to ask for that on, give them one more month on that.
One more month on the kiosk.
Get in touch with Chris, who's in charge of helping me get this situated for the BURK. That's the name of the company. Hopefully, we'll get it through. Other than that, I'm hopefully going around tomorrow and telling everybody, see what's going on.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Sisk? Very good. Finance Committee, Mr. Knight?
We have no report.
No report. Personnel Committee, Ms. Stinson?
No report.
No report. And the new, a new committee, I call it the Volunteer Services Committee, and we have placed E.B. Fisher as the chairman of this, and let me tell you why. Because Mr. Fisher has got over 50 years of experience in volunteer services. He is a founding member of the Nodaway County, well, actually, the Crewe Emergency Squad that is now the Nodaway, Nodaway County Emergency Squad, and when he started... And when he started, they had a station wagon, a white station wagon called Maude. And all they could do in those days was stoop and scoot, basically, put somebody on a, in a.
Load and go.
Load and go, that's right. And, um.
And hope for the best.
That's it. And I remember, when they got authorization to take blood pressure, that was a major deal. And now we've got rescue squad, volunteer emergency squadsmen that are paramedics and doctors, in some cases. And I, I don't know that you've had a chance to do anything, if you've got a report?
I don't have anything at this time. Show me there's no reports at this point.
Very good.
Sure, I'll be on vacation the next council meeting, but I'll have something.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir, and thank you for your service of over fifty years. Mayor's report. I got a lot of stuff. But we'll try to go through it fairly quickly. You'll find in your, you'll find in your packet, you know, for the monthly police schedule. This is an old Navy habit of mine, that whenever you're in command or in charge, you want to schedule whoever's on watch. And I felt like every member of council should have it in case something came up and they needed to contact one of our officers. And if you want it, you can have it, if you don't, that's fine, but we have asked for that. The lottery for localities, um, I have already engaged other communities on this. And what I would like is a motion from this council to support the lottery for localities proposal. And by endorsement, we will ask Virginia Municipal Leagues place the issue on their legislative agenda. For those that are not familiar with it, the town of Crew generated over two million dollars' worth of sales and lottery tickets last year. Had we had a tax of five percent, it would have been a pretty significant chunk of change in our, in our, in our town revenues. When you look at Nottaway County as a whole, over six million dollars in sales were made. We have come up with a formula and a proposal for legislation that we intend to engage our general assembly members on, asking them to put a five percent kickback on lottery sales to the communities from which they come. This will bring money back to our communities, because right now, it's all going out and it's not, it's not staying here. You don't see any revenues from it. It, it does no good, other than the two million dollars that goes to the school system. It's been covered in the press, you've got the talking paper, I won't hammer it anymore. I will entertain a motion.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Was there any response to the issues raised by the lottery representative and the career record?
No, sir, it was not necessary to make a response. His, his, uh, he was a, he's on the payroll for seventy-five thousand dollars a year with the Virginia Lottery, and his job is to protect those executives that make well over a hundred thousand dollars a year. All right? Off of your money coming out of Nottaway County. What he claimed, what he alleged, was that if we got a five percent kickback in every community, that it would lower the prices of prizes, and that the people would go to North Carolina to buy lottery tickets. That's a faulty argument.
Right, I.
On a lot of different levels.
Okay.
Am I who we support lottery for localities?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next in your packet, you have been handed a talking paper, a background paper on Golubek Stadium. And I misfired when we put the package together originally, and it was not in your original packet, so we don't have to take action on it tonight, if you want to delay it. The bottom line is that, um, Mr. Whip Wilson, who is a former mayor of the town of Crew, is, is the head baseball coach for Nottaway County High School. He takes care of Golubek Stadium and the grounds on Golubek, and he does so with, with town assistance. We have a very good working relationship with the school system. Mr. Wilson has come to us asking for town support to do some administrative and some, some maintenance issues around Golubek, including straightening the soccer fence, removing some timber stumps, and doing some grading on the far end of the soccer field, and, uh, help, and using some equipment to knock down the current dugouts, so they can basically put them like, back together as they were when they were built around nineteen thirty-eight, nineteen thirty-nine. In nineteen thirty-eight or nineteen thirty-nine, the dugouts were in fact dugouts. They were in the ground, and you had to take two or three steps to get into them. Those, uh, those were later built up, and it, and it impacts the view shed for people wanting to watch games that are played there. The documentation is there, we talked to, uh, we talked to the street department, Tony Shelton, and, um, Tony's of the opinion that he could handle the work without any undue stress on town employees, and they could, they could save that kind of work for days when things are slow. Again, you don't have to take action on it tonight, if you want to delay it, we can put it in committee and give you time to digest the data that you've got.
Has this been coordinated through the athletic director for Nottaway?
It has not, other than from what Mr. Wilson has told me, he was to coordinate with the superintendent, as I understand it. But I do not have that feedback from him yet, so we can, that's a good question.
Are they going to give us the property?
No, not to my knowledge. That was not discussed. What was discussed was that if we straightened the soccer field out, it would make it a full-length soccer field that meets tournament requirements, and that you could feasibly put two tee-ball fields at the other end.
That's fine. The soccer, um, it's, it's a lot of butter heads over there. We can talk about it later.
Okay. What we'll do, we'll tell you what. Why don't we put this in your committee then, actually? That would be the infrastructure committee.
That's fine.
All right.
Uh, just one more question.
Yes, sir.
The potential park site on the map there, that.
Yes, sir.
Does not involve the removal of trees?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, no, no.
It does.
We also remove the pine trees that are on that one end, they've been falling down. Mother Nature's been doing us pretty good.
Okay, I mean, this, uh, this big section here. My, my concerns for the houses on the southeast corner.
Yes, sir.
And I just want their feedback, or at least give them the potential.
Well, I agree, I agree, and that's a, that's a, that's just a concept of operations. He didn't ask for that, I threw that in there.
No.
That's why I don't want to act on it, I want, I prefer you to read it, digest it, and think about it, and go from there.
Perfect.
Airport maintenance, do we have that?
Should be with.
I generate two minutes paper. You have one on airport maintenance. All right, you did that one, okay. Very good. As part of my top to bottom view of everything that's going on in the town of Crew, trying to understand where the money is going and how it's being spent, one of the things that we identified or looked at was, was the airport. The Crew Municipal Police Airport generates rent income from hangars and also from fuel sales. Our expenses are going to be fuel costs, grass cutting, electricity costs, and telephone costs. And right now, our, our costs outweigh our, our sales, our revenue. What I'm asking is to just go into the infrastructure committee and the economic development committee, because we have two items of concern. For the infrastructure committee, I want you to see what you need to do to examine the rate structure on the hangars, and determine whether or not we need a rate increase, and if so, by how much. I would ask that you engage the stakeholders that are out there, the various people that own the hangars and airplanes, and also check around with other airports to see what they charge. The other element is the economic development potential, and this is where it goes in your basket, because you got a good idea. But I was walking the grounds over there, and we have this whole slew of, whole lot of land on the left side of the airport runway. It goes down the hill, hits Winningham Creek, and then comes up on the other side. The former airport manager, Bobby Mann, told me that that runway will never be able to be extended, because it drops off pretty steeply. What I would like for you to do is ascertain the feasibility of putting a reservoir there on that property, a reservoir that could be stocked with fish, and then used for outdoor recreation. And then later, and then we can charge for that, because if we had fish, we could charge a fishing license and, and use fees that could go to help maintain the airport. So it's a revenue generator, is what I'm thinking about. Long-term, long-term, if we run out of water, we have water issues down the road, a twenty-two million gallon reservoir could serve as a potential source of water for the town of Crew. So that goes to your committee, and of course, you've got the other element in your committee. Any questions for me on that? All right. I am appointing the Personnel Committee to lead the Chief of Police search. You have in your, you have in your packet, Mr., uh, the, the report of the Special Committee, and they did a stellar job of setting a foundation on moving forward. It's really good work. It is a framework from which we can jump off and go forward. Per parliamentary procedure, when your report is submitted, the, the, that committee dissolves.
That's correct.
Okay. So we're putting this in the Personnel Committee, but with that said, any member of council can be involved in that. All you got to do is go to the meeting and make your inputs. Further, because these are all public record events, anybody that wants to go to Personnel Committee meetings can do that. These will be duly advertised and posted, consistent with the Freedom of Information Act. When you have a committee meeting, this has, if they have a set time, and this is normally the case, they'll have a set time, anybody can go.
Uh, just to, um, add to that, with, according to the Freedom of Information Act, the committees with four members will need to keep minutes.
You have, well, okay. My understanding was you had to keep minutes anyway, after, if you had three or more, you have to keep minutes?
Possibly.
Okay.
I don't know about three.
We can verify.
Four is a definite.
We can verify that.
It's a two-point-two, et cetera.
I've got fifteen-point-two with me, but not two-point-two. But I can look it up, but.
We can, we can, but we can verify that.
Perfect.
All right, uh, I skip over item.
What's the advertising requirement? I'm sure you guys know, but I don't.
If you establish a committee meeting at a set date and time that is consistent, like we meet on the second Monday of the month, all right? In his case, you meet the third, the Economic Development Committee.
First Monday.
First Monday.
Sorry, first Wednesday.
First Wednesday of the month, at a, at a set time and at a set location. So that's, that's all you have to do, is advertise at the one time, it gets posted, it's posted in Town Hall. Anybody that wants to know can go by and look and see what's, what's posted where. Because we have new committees, folks will have to talk to each other to find out what time is best for them to meet.
And then we advertise it one time, if we've set the time.
Yes.
So it's going to be recurring. If it's not recurring, then you have to advertise it for what?
If you have a special meeting, you have to advertise at least three days in advance.
Very well.
Item E is an executive session issue, and I'll bypass that. Item F, the new committee assignments, I have discussed that, uh, in part, other, rather than just name committees, I have put somewhat of a vision statement in there as well. My thoughts about how, uh, things that I would like to see, um, these are flexible, we can change, uh, we can change things if you're not happy with them, as far as the, the duties of the committees. But I tried to look at folks and their strengths and weaknesses as I understood them to be. I did not, unfortunately, I did not have the, the opportunity to have everybody's resume in front of me, but I know that many of you have served on these committees before, and you have past experience, uh, working in these, or you have some past experience that is relevant to the committees that we've placed you on. Overtime approval process. I have a memo in there, uh, and this was a, just an administrative item that I wanted to engage in. Our, our overtime was pretty excessive last year in some areas, and what I want to do is to make sure that we have transparency, and make sure that you, as council members, know everything that's going on, and whenever there is a requirement for overhead, that there's a process where we document that overhead, and that's what that form on the back is for. That way, when we approve that overhead, it goes into a file somewhere, and if somebody says, well, what did we do, next number of hours overtime during this month, we have it documented. In some cases, uh, the overtime might be pretty significant, and what I have, what I'm directing is that at least three of the four members of the Finance Committee make approval on certain items. In, in this case, law enforcement investigations sometimes require heavy and lengthy, lengthy investigations and lengthy time on the street, doing surveillance and things of that nature. And of course, that runs up the, that runs up the bank account. But I want you to know ahead of time what's going on, and let us have that documented, and that's what that is for.
Mayor, I could see that there would be overtime instances that are, come up on an emergency basis.
Yes, ma'am.
What do we do in that case?
Well, those would, I mean, those are, those are obviously emergencies, but what, what that is mainly for is planned, planned overtime. Street, you know, this, we have a water main break, obviously, people are going to have to do it. If you've got a police officer to write the ticket at five-twenty-five, and he gets off at five-thirty, then he's got to continue his investigation and doing what he's doing. All right.
You said three out of the four would be making the recommendation, or at least three out of?
At least three out of four, right. I mean, in other words, all four would be called, all four would be called, so they have situational awareness, but if we have a vote of three of the four that's authorizing the overtime, then they can go ahead and proceed with operations.
My concern comes with that fourth member.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if there's a way that one individual could sit out for these issues, but when you deal with four members of council, uh, you're dealing with a quorum of council, and it.
That is a quorum only when you have an official full council meeting, a committee of the whole.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
But nevertheless, it's four of the council members who would then come in, I, I assume, would make their, the same vote to council, if I need they.
It's only, but, all I'm trying to do is, you know, we can, we can go through all seven if you want, I mean, but I want oversight and transparency of funding.
I understand the process, and, and, and the purpose behind it, and it's a good purpose, and it's good, and, and, and I like the result, it's just, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about, about it. Given that issue, that, it, it's essentially a majority of council already making a decision.
Well, it's a majority of a committee making the decision.
Yes, a majority of the committee who are also members of council.
Okay. I don't see a conflict, frankly.
Well, I, I, I would just ask them to be open up for, for discussion.
Go ahead.
If no one else has any issue with it, I'll withdraw my.
Mr. Reed?
It makes sense to me.
Mr. Sisk? Mr. Fisher? Mr. Stinson?
One concern I have is that we are assuming that the four members will vote the same way. That, you know, we said, we're saying, if I'm understanding, three of the four. Well, if that fourth one really says no, if it came to the whole council, that could change the dynamic significantly. Maybe not, but we're making the assumption that the members of the committee are going to be in total agree.
Well, that's why we want to justify it and put it before you, before they spend it. I mean, if somebody's got an issue, then that, that's time to bring it up, if they, one of the Finance Committee folk. Now, if you want, we can change it and make it all seven.
Well, who was approving it before?
Well, in some cases, it was just, it was, it was taking, the department heads were taking place. But you saw in your.
The mayor's the executive depart, or not the mayor, excuse me, the town manager's the executive department head overall. Could he have the authority to approve the overtime as opposed to council? And then we bring it up?
He could.
I think, I think that'd be a good idea for the manager to handle it.
Okay.
If he's not comfortable with it, then he goes to the Finance Committee.
Okay. Mr. Abel?
I agree with that.
Okay.
I, that sounds good to me.
You agree? Very well, then what we'll do is amend that order, and, uh, put it on the town manager's plate, and, uh, that may be good.
Everybody have his phone number?
I know where he lives.
All right. I have, uh, also in the packet, my administrative realignment of the Police Department that is for administrative lines of communication. Now, Mr. Miskovic sent me some questions that I, finally, I was able to prepare a response to this morning. They're pretty lengthy. They're pretty lengthy. Let me just give you my background on this. I'm an old soldier. Streamlined chain of command makes things work better. It increases public accountability. What we have done is put a bureaucratic head that ensures further accountability of activities that go on in the town. The town manager is the most important, and I don't mean Wade specifically, but the Office of Town Manager, and I like Wade, don't get me wrong. But the Office of Town Manager is the most, most important job, or most important position that we've got, and particularly that, that you appoint, because he is the man that you go to for all the answers. Therefore, if he has that administrative chain where other activities are coordinated through him that don't normally go through him, by coordinating on those, he has situational awareness, and he can provide you background information as a collective body. Now, Mr. Miskovic sent me, uh, a number of questions, which I have attempted to answer, but he and I have like mine on a lot of things. Uh, we would like to see this as policy, uh, perhaps, and what I want to do now is put this in the Personnel Committee, along with Mr. Miskovic's, uh, questions and my responses, and consider, let council consider drafting a policy that we can firm up, one that will stand, uh, the test of, of any legal challenge, maybe one that, if you're comfortable with it, we can move forward to the Virginia General Assembly and ask for a charter chain. And again, that's not something we have to decide tonight, it is placed in it in committee. That committee will discuss it in their work session, and all members of council are free to participate and have input. All right. Implementation, implementation of a work order log, I have, um, I have come up, I have come up with a concept for a work order log. One of the things that I've heard this council express, or the prior councils express, was a desire for an annual report, and I think that's a great idea. I think that was in the comprehensive plan that Mr. Stinson put together, but one of the things that we need for reporting are nuggets of information, and what I would like to do is implement a work order log, where every issue that comes before us gets documented in the log, we identify, uh, who, who makes the, the complaint or raises the issue, and it's not always gonna be a complaint or raises the issue, then that gets assigned to an action officer within the town workforce, it gets satisfied, and once it's satisfied, we can do a follow-up phone call as part of our customer service to the people that pay the taxes in this community. It's, it's something, I don't know, I don't know how work-intensive it will be, but, but conceptually, let's say that, I mean, we meet people on the street all the time, conceptually, if one came up and said, "Well, there's a dog running loose down there, and it's attacking little kids," then we have to do something about it, because we're members of council. At that point, we would pick up the phone and call the town manager, who would talk to the police, and the police will go handle it, or the Street Department, uh, Tony, uh, TJ, I'm sorry. But this allows us to keep track of various activities that go on in town over the next year or two. Uh, during, during the 12-month period, or at the end of the 12-month period, we can take that data, and we can start, we can basically do the, the, you know, the data dump, and, uh, figure out some of the other things that we've done, uh, in addition to the, some of the more routine stuff. There's a lot of work that gets done that we don't see, because it's, it's routine in nature, and, uh, it's, it may be small, and, and not something that would necessarily get reported on, but it's something that, uh, it's something that we probably should keep track of, because it's, it's, it really shows the work that our people do on a daily I don't know that we need any action, but if anybody wants to make any.
I like the idea, very good.
Okay.
Uh, I would just encourage a mechanism for prioritizing, so if there was a dog attacking the extent that, that would go a little bit higher up than, uh, than I've got a limb in, in, in the road.
Good point, good point, well taken. Mr. Abel? Anything? Mr. Knight? Mr. Stinson? Mr. Fisher? Mr. Sisk? Mr. Reed? Very well. Uh, and finally, there is a rough draft, an after-action report of a fact-finding trip to the center of the universe brewing company, uh, that Mr. Miskovic orchestrated, and, uh, I was able to go, Mr. Knight was able to go, and Ms. Stinson was able to go, and, uh, one of the things that we were looking at, uh, and I, I'll let you take it, actually, you go ahead and explain what we were doing, I know what we were doing.
Oh, okay, um, well.
Off to the front, too.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, what we, what we wanna do is find a, an entity to come into brew, um, and open up a business, specifically a brewery, a microbrewery, um, because back in the day, uh, every small town had their own brewery, uh, and it was a sense of, uh, it was a place where individuals can go to, to meet, to, uh, to converse, to talk about the, uh, ongings of, of the town and everything else.
Drink beer.
Drink, drink beer, uh, spend money, um, and, uh, but it was also a sense of pride for the community. Uh, so, individuals would go, say, you're going to Virginia Beach for the, for the weekend, they would bring their, uh, their local beer, and, uh, and, um, and, and let everyone experience it, and have a sense of pride and a sense of ownership in the, uh, in the brewery. Uh, and, microbreweries, since, uh, Governor McDonald signed legislation in 2012, um, allowing, uh, much more flexibility with, uh, with microbreweries, um, they've been, uh, expanding, and it's, it's a thriving, growing industry in Virginia. So, we want to, uh, tap into it and, uh, come, find someone who, uh, who can create our Crew Brew.
Crew Brew, I like that. Now, what'd you say, we have 10,000 cars that come through town every day?
10,000 cars down, uh, 460 every day.
Yeah. All we gotta do is get some more to stop, that's all.
Exactly.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Miskovic?
We emphasize there were no beverages consumed on the trip.
Right, that is correct.
That's correct.
We need meat lunch.
Uh, next item on the agenda is new business. Do we have any new business?
Mayor, I have a piece of new business.
Yes, sir.
Council needs to appoint a vice mayor.
Correct.
And, uh, with that, I would nominate, uh, the current vice mayor, and Stinson, uh, for, to continue as vice mayor.
Very well. Mr. Stinson is nominated.
Okay.
We have a second, by Mr. Knight, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mayor McGinn.
I'm honored, and wish you much good health. I'll be consulting with your wife on.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Your exercise routine and diet.
It's funny you should mention that. Very good, very good.
All right. Another, another piece of new business there.
Yes, sir.
Um, and it's more of a question for the town manager. Um, we have in our budget, uh, funding for a part-time employee, do we need any action on that? Are we at that point yet?
Not at this time.
Okay.
We're, we're studying the, the, uh, the need, what that person would be responsible for in a job description, basically, at this point, so.
Very good. Um, another piece of new business, Mayor.
Okay.
Um, I've recently learned, and, uh, the town manager has confirmed, that there is an old cemetery in the middle of the industrial park.
Yes, sir.
Um, there's some rumor that it's, uh, uh, part of the old, uh.
It is, belongs to the Robertson clan.
Okay.
It's the Robertson family.
And there may even be Union soldiers buried in there, that.
That I wasn't aware, but it wouldn't surprise me, because over on the far side of the, uh, park, where there was a, a pipe, um, I think there's a building there now, but there was a, a Union Army encampment from the First Vermont Infantry.
Okay.
Watching a railroad. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're fine. Um, I don't know if that land is, I guess we've given that land to?
I don't, I don't think we gave it away because of that.
Okay, very good.
They, they cleared everything, but they were, they made them leave as, as it is.
Is there any way the town can look at cleaning that up, and?
Yeah.
There's really not, haven't been over there, but there's not a whole lot to look at. There's evidence that there are gravesites there, there, there's some organization, as they're in line, there are some, there are no markers of any kind with any writing, but there are stones, um, and there is an old wrought iron gate that's been destroyed, but remnants of it are still there, so.
Okay.
Definitely, definitely something there, yeah.
And then, lastly, on the topic of cemeteries, is there someone doing a registry of the cemetery, um, and, especially in recent years, with, are, is, are, are, you, you're keeping up to date the, uh, the current registry?
Your record?
Yes.
As best I can, yes.
To the best you can, okay. Is there any assistance you need for that, that the town can provide?
No, no.
Okay. Okay.
He, he brings us the information.
Okay.
Regularly, and.
I'm trying to keep up with it, and I'll bring it to the town.
We record it, we record it.
Very good. Okay, it was just a, just a question, someone, uh, brought to my attention earlier this evening. That's all I have, Mayor.
Where, where did you hear that a Union soldier's were buried there, though?
Uh, Fred Davis, the, uh, the elder Fred Davis.
Okay. He doesn't have names or units?
He doesn't, no. He, he said it was a, it was a rumor that he had her, so you know how.
Yeah.
How things are.
It must have been a very old rumor.
Good deal. Any other new business?
Regarding the cemetery?
Yes, ma'am.
He sometimes has made comments that it would be helpful if the town would let him know also when somebody is buried, because he often, actually, would go drive up through there, just to see if there's a fresh grave or whatever, fresh graves, because what, where he pulls this information is from the newspapers.
Right.
He pulls, like, five different newspapers around south central Virginia, but, in fact, people get dropped in there, and nope, he doesn't know it, you know what I mean?
Right.
From my knowledge, not always, no.
So, it would be helpful if the town, when they keep, because doesn't somebody have to apply for permit or something to be buried up there?
They do.
Keep him abreast, because he has done a good job of keeping those records.
Sure.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, we can work together on that.
Okay. Any other new business? Any continuing business?
Yes, um, it's time for us to, um, review our comprehensive plan. Part of the comprehensive plan is that it will, a status update will be done in January and July.
Sure.
I'd like to schedule a time with you, Mayor, and with the town manager to start on that.
Okay.
We may need to, um, ask for input from other, um, committees as we move through it.
You want this week or next week?
Um, whatever's good for you all.
Um. You available tomorrow afternoon? You available tomorrow afternoon?
I think so.
Okay, about what time?
Um.
3 o'clock?
Yeah.
3? All right. Town Hall?
That's good.
Town manager's office. Thank you for all the work you've done on that, I love reading, but I'm a planner, so.
Um, also, uh, Councilman Miskovic brought up about updating, you know, our, our webpage. Have we done anything about putting someone, finding someone to manage all our social media?
Nothing other than a quote we got.
I'll, uh, draft in R and P for the Personnel Committee's agenda.
That'd be good.
Right, I'll try to get that to you by the end of the week.
Good deal. Any other continuing business? If not, we remove to the public comment section of the meeting again. Are there anyone, any delegations from the public? Yes, ma'am?
Something on behalf of Scott Lowe, he was here earlier. He is having a free cookout called Unity in the Community. It will be here at, on the lawn on, on July 16th, from 4 to 6. It's a special community event sponsored by local citizens to show appreciation for our local people. We'll have food, games, and a few special events that you are sure to love. He wanted me to just let everyone know that it'll be right here, 4 to 6, July 16th. It's free, open to the public, local citizens are putting it together, and he wanted to personally invite you all, but he had to go to another function, uh, wanted to give you an opportunity to get out and meet the community.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I do have some flyers here, if anybody would need one.
Outstanding. Any other public comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first comment about, uh, the collection of the, uh, limbs, et cetera, from last month, I would like to commend the, uh, the town workers in getting that stuff off of the streets, uh, and the sidewalks, uh, they did a good job of that. Second, I know that, uh, this has to do with Lubbock Stadium and that issue there, the school board will be reviewing that.
Good.
I happen to know a school board member.
It is.
And, uh, the third issue, uh, the lottery monies that you're discussing come, the state park gives us.
You get $2 million in lottery cash.
Yes, yes.
Their proposal.
If, if they parcel off some to, or if they, if they decide to give the county and towns some of that money, they're not gonna make up the difference that, that we lose. We're just gonna, the schools are gonna lose that, and we need every dime that we've got right now, so, uh, I don't think that the school, the, the School Board Association, and likely the school boards, are gonna be, uh, in favor of this particular bill when it comes up.
I'm gonna give you this, uh, what we're proposing, the money does not come from the school allocation. The school board right now, the school system, you can have this, the school system right now gets 29% of total sales of lottery monies.
Thank you.
60.1% of total sales go into the prize pool, and what we're recommending is that 5%, that 5% that we're requesting come out of the prize pool, so the prize pool will go down from 60% to 55% of total sales. So, it's not gonna impact the school system at all.
Okay.
That's, that's the proposal. We knew, we knew if we tried to take any school money, it would die, you know, die a slow death. Actually, probably a very, very, very quick death, yeah. So, um, and we don't want the school money, to be perfectly honest. I mean, I've talked to the other mayors and other members of, uh, of the Board of Supervisors, and again, when you read that, you'll see that, that 5% that we're requesting will come out of the prize pool, and that, that's the argument that the gentleman from, um, from, Richmond was making, saying that if our prize pool dropped, that they, people would not play the lottery. Well, the prize pool, the prize pool last year was over $1.1 billion. If you take out the 5% from that $1.1 billion, it's still over $1 billion in a prize pool, so I don't think it's gonna have any impact whatsoever on player, uh, on players.
He's kinda clueless there.
Sir?
Uh, he's kinda clueless there.
Yes, sir. But he's from Richmond, so.
Why do you got, yeah, that's true, he is from Richmond. While you guys are into that, uh, if, if, if you can, uh, work to get, um, if, when the lottery was first established, the monies that were collected from that and went to the schools were intended to supplement what we've got from the counties. Somewhere along the land, they are supplanting. Now, they might use some fancy word to tell you that they're not, and they can tell you that, that we aren't getting what we should be getting from the state and the lottery on that. They have managed to twist words here and there, and give us monies from lotteries that should have been coming, that, that, uh, that should just be general fund monies. So, if y'all can help us out in any way there, I'm sure every school division in the Commonwealth would just be ecstatic.
Understood. Anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hart. Good to see you, as always, long time.
You too.
With that in mind, if there's no further comment, we, uh, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session, consistent with Virginia State Code 2.2-3711, Paragraphs 1, Personnel, Paragraphs 1, personnel, and paragraphs 3 and 5, property and prospective businesses, respectively.
Make a motion to adjourn the executive session under the 2.2-3711. Personnel and 3.5.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you all for coming out.
I've seen a lot of people have. Fred Blue.
Mr. Fisher makes a motion that we be certified. Mr. Knight makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're out of executive session. And we have certified that we only talked about those issues that we went into executive session on, which were property, potential business, and personnel. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to authorize negotiation.
Mayor, point of, point of order.
Yes, sir.
I believe we need a roll call vote for certification.
Ah, very good. Mr. Miskovic?
Yes.
Mr. Abel? Yes. Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Ms. Stinson?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sisk?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Very good. At this time, I will entertain a motion to authorize negotiation with an undisclosed business.
So moved.
Mr. Miskovic. Mr. Reed is second. All in favor, say aye.
Question, question, question. All is, all, all that was discussed should not leave this room.
Correct.
They don't want, they won't, they want the press to get it.
Right, that's, that's.
That's why we said it's disclosed.
Okay. All right, Mr.
We, we overbid it.
We have the move, motion, and, okay.
All in favor, yes.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition?
I'm sorry, which one was this?
The motion to authorize negotiation with the undisclosed.
Oh, yeah, yes, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought we already voted on that, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Third item, or second item, motion to accept VFW land for children's park. All in, do I?
Make the motion. We make a motion, we accept it. With the stipulations we, we.
Right.
Stipulation that we cut the grass for 10 years, no.
Okay.
Right, exactly.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to accept Chief Booth's resignation, dated 27 June 2016.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
We have two noes. Motion carries.
Three noes.
Three noes. Mr. Fisher said no, also.
Probably in him, though, leaning back.
All right.
And can we make that motion, comma, pending review of personnel?
Personnel committee to ensure that we do everything consistent with the personnel policies. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Consistent with law, what we like to say. That's implied to me, but I understand. Is there any further business to discuss at council tonight?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We are adjourned.